You can go ahead and turn to Luke chapter five is where we'll be tonight. Luke chapter five, as we continue our study on Peter, how God makes rock. Let me begin with the word prayer and then we'll get into things. Father, we bow before you here this evening and we thank you for the opportunity to gather together as men and study your word together. We thank you for the hope that we find in the scriptures, also the instruction, the correction that we find in the scriptures. And Lord, I pray that even tonight, as we talked about last week, that tonight will be a chiseling for us, helping us to continue to grow in Christ likeness so that we may be who you've always intended us to be. Lord, help us to know even tonight what that looks like even more, but more importantly, even than knowing just the meaning of the text, help us to know you more as a result of our time here together. So, open our eyes, we may see wondrous things from night long, in your name we pray, amen. So again, we'll be in Luke chapter five, and as you're turning there, I want to tell you a story about a man you may have heard of before named George Mueller. George Mueller grew up as a boy in Germany in the eighteen hundreds, but he, you know, kind of a troubled child. He stole from his dad, he spent some nights in a hotel and didn't pay his bill, he even spent some time in jail. So, his dad thought that it would be good for him to go to college and actually wanted him to get a theology degree, because in that particular time period, it was considered a good and honorable profession to be a pastor. And so, that's what he sent him to college to do. However, when George Mueller got to college, well, he didn't really change his ways. In fact, he spent most of his time drinking and gambling and actually making fun of Christians. He had a friend who invited him to come to a Bible study and he agreed to do so. And really, the only reason he agreed to do so is because he wanted more opportunity to pick on Christians. But while he was there, he was just amazed with how welcoming the believers were. And as they were studying the Bible, he began to learn more about the Bible and learn more about God. And low and behold, next thing he knows, he's on his knees and he's asking forgiveness and he's surrendering his life to the Lord. George Mueller, as a new Christian, began to read about missionaries and decided maybe that that's what he wanted to do. So, he goes to his dad and he tells his dad that he wants to be a missionary, but his dad was furious for that. Having incident, he sent him to college to get a theology degree, wanted to be a pastor, but he didn't want to be a missionary. He didn't think that was a good thing for him to do. And so, his dad told him he was going to cut him off, that he was going to find his own way to pay for college. So Mueller didn't know what in the world he was going to do, so he did the only thing he knew to do, and that was he got on his knees and he prayed and he asked that God somehow, some way would provide him money to be able to stay in school. And as he was praying, he heard a knock on his dorm room door. And as he opened the door, there was a professor there who was offering him a paid intern position, which was just enough to pay for school. When George Mueller graduated, he actually ended up going into the pastorate and he was a pastor in England. And while pastoring in England, he noticed that there were a lot of orphans in the community that were particularly on the streets and that many of those orphans were being taken advantage in some of the workhouses. And so, it really had a burden to do something for those orphans. He wanted to take them in, care for them, but he didn't have any means to do that. And so, well, he did the only thing he knew to do, and that is once again, he began to pray and he asked God to provide. And well, sure enough, God provided a place for them to meet. God provided people to care for those orphans. God provided furniture and he provided clothing and he provided food that was needed for them to begin that orphanage. At one point though, there were about three hundred children that now were living in George Mueller's orphanage. And there was a particular day where money had just gone absolutely dry and they didn't even have enough money for food. So, he gets the leaders of the school to gather all the children together in the dining room and gathered them around, I guess it'd be a cafeteria, but gathered them around the breakfast table. And he told them that they were going to pray and they were going to wait for God to provide for their needs. And as they were there together in that cafeteria and they were praying, there's a knock on the door. They go to the door and there's a baker on the other side who begins to explain to Mueller and the others that during the previous night, God had just woke him up and told him that he needed to bake bread for the orphanage. And so, he began to bake bread and he was delivering the bread that God had told him to bring. While they were having that conversation, there was a milkman's cart that lost a wheel right outside of the orphanage. And so, the milkman comes to them and realizing that he's got all of these gallons of milk that are going to spoil before he's able to take care of that cart, he offered that milk to the orphanage and it was just enough for three hundred children. It said that George Mueller kept a prayer journal throughout his life. And in that prayer journal, there were over fifty thousand documented answers to prayer, thirty thousand of which were answered within the day and in some cases, even the hour that he had actually prayed. George Mueller believed in the power of prayer, but his story is one more than just in the power of God working through prayer. His story is also one that shows us how God provides for us and in doing so prepares us for things to come. You see, Mueller had no idea that one day he and his orphanage would be responsible for caring for ten thousand orphans based on prayer. When in that dorm room, having been cut off by his father, he prayed and asked God to provide for him to go to school. But that one moment really shaped the rest of his life. And the rest of his life, he became a man of prayer and God did incredible things through it. As we look at Luke chapter five tonight, we're going to see where this is a moment in Peter's life that actually will forever shape who he is as a rock. So in Luke chapter five, we'll begin with verse one, go through verse eleven. Luke says, "So it was as the multitude pressed about him to hear the word of God, that he stood by the lake of Gennesaret and saw two boats standing by the lake, but the fishermen had gone from them and were washing their nets. Then he got into one of the boats, which was Simon's, and asked him to put out a little from the land. And he sat down and taught the multitudes from the boat. When he had stopped speaking, he said to Simon, 'Launch out into the deep and let down your nets for a catch.' But Simon answered and said to him, 'Master, we've told all night and caught nothing. Nevertheless, it's your word, I will let down the net.' And when they had done this, they caught a great number of fish and their net was breaking. So, they signaled to their partners in the other boat to come and help them. And they came and filled both the boats, and they began to sink. And when Simon Peter saw it, he fell down at Jesus' knees, saying, 'Depart from me, for I am a sinful man, O Lord.' For he and all who were with him were astonished at the catch of fish which they had taken; and so also were James and John, the sons of Zebedee, who were partners with Simon. And Jesus said to Simon, 'Do not be afraid; from now on, you will catch men.' So, when they had brought their boats to land, they forsook all and followed him." So, we see there in verse one, that the multitudes were pressing about Jesus to hear the word of God. So, as he's proclaiming about the kingdom of God, people are pressing in and things are getting real tight. And so, in verse two, he sees two boats, and so he sees an opportunity to kind of distance himself a little bit. And of course, one of those belonged to Simon. And so, it tells us in verse three, that he gets into one of the boats, which was Simon's, and he asked him to put out a little from the land and he sat down and taught the multitudes from the boat. In a way, you would say Jesus is kind of doing his own kind of fishing, right? It's an efficient boat and he's casting a net, but he's casting the net, the net basically is the word of God, right? I mean, he's casting the word of God and people are being brought into the kingdom. But now, the fishing of Jesus was different, of course, than the fishing of Simon and James and John, because Simon and James and John, well, they would catch fish in order to keep them and sell them and make profit off of them. But Jesus's fishing was more kind of a catch and release, right? It wasn't to sell and make profit, it was to bring them in and let them go. In fact, if you look over at Luke chapter four, if you look at verse sixteen and following, you'll see where it says this, that Jesus came to Nazareth where he'd been brought up, and as his custom was, he went in the synagogue on the Sabbath day and he stood up to read. And he was handed the book of the prophet Isaiah. And when he opened the book, he found the place where it was written, "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he has anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He has sent me to heal the broken-hearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and recovery of sight to the blind, to set at liberty those who were oppressed, to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord." So, what Jesus is reading there in Isaiah, and he claims, of course, that this passage is talking about me, is what Jesus is saying. He had come to catch men in order to release them from the captivity of sin, make sense? So, Jesus is in a fishing boat, but he's doing a different kind of fishing. And he's catching a different kind of net, and of course, it has a completely different kind of purpose. Then you look there at verse four and it says, "He stopped speaking, he said to Simon," this is after he preaches, "And he says, 'Launch out into the deep and let down your nets for a catch.'" In verse five, Simon answered and said to him, "Master, we've told all night and caught nothing. Nevertheless, it's your word, I will let down the net." Peter was a fisherman. These were Peter's waters. Peter had been fishing all night long. They didn't catch anything. They washed their nets, they're exhausted, and they're ready to go home. Peter is essentially saying to Jesus, "These are my waters. I know that there's not any fish out here, but out of respect for you, okay, we'll do it." Then in verse six, "When they had done this, they caught a great number of fish and their net was breaking. And they signaled to their partners in the other boat to come and help them. And they came and filled both the boats, so that they began to sink." Ultimately, when you think about it, when Jesus tells Simon to launch out into the boat and go fishing, even when Simon had been doing that and he caught absolutely nothing and was exhausted and didn't want to do it, Jesus was really kind of inviting him to trust him, wasn't he? And so, as they go out into the water and they let down their nets, now they're not only catching fish, but they're catching more fish than they've ever caught in their lifetimes. So much fish that they have to get another boat to come and bring in a haul. Well, what was the difference between when Simon and James and John were fishing in the night and when they're fishing now? Jesus was in the boat, right? And so, it's real clear, I mean, you don't need a theology degree, really clear to see from the passage, that the difference in whether or not they were going to catch fish that day was just the fact that Jesus was in the boat. Now, let's think for a minute about Jesus's plan for Peter. He's already told him, "You are Simon, but I'm going to make you Peter. I am going to make you a rock." This moment in Peter's life, just like in George Mueller's story, this moment is going to play a huge role in everything that Jesus asks him to do going forward. You know, in business terms, you've heard the term a soft launch. A soft launch oftentimes is what a restaurant does as they're beginning to open up. One of the great memories of my children is when Chick-fil-A came to Starkville. And I got an invitation from the manager of Chick-fil-A to bring my family to the soft launch. And man, they, I'm telling you, thought they were some kind of big time. I think probably everybody in Starkville got that, but they didn't know that, right? And so, we go to the soft launch and I'm going to tell you, we probably, we had to have sat there at least an hour or an hour and a half. And it was the greatest thing in the world, particularly if you like Chick-fil-A, because they were just walking around with trays of absolutely everything on their menu, from the nuggets to the strips to sandwich to the wrap to the milkshakes and the, I mean, absolutely everything. They were walking around with trays filled with those things and just bringing it. And my kids, I'm telling you, they just were filled with chicken by the time we left that place. Well, you know, the benefit, of course, for Chick-fil-A is that they get you hooked on their food. But also, it's kind of an opportunity for them to work the kinks out, right? Because it's a first store in Starkville, and so, none of the people who are working at the store had ever worked at the store before, right? And so, they're needing to teach the people who are doing the checking out how to do that. Need to teach the cooks how to cook for large groups. I mean, it's a soft launch, a way to kind of start and get you prepared for what's to come. Think about this launch for Peter as a soft launch. Jesus is intentionally doing this with Peter and James and John, because he knows what he has for them in the future and, man, there's some things to learn here in this. Now, if you look at verse eight, "So when Simon Peter saw it," so after he sees this catch of fish, "he fell down at Jesus' knees, saying, 'Depart from me, for I am a sinful man, O Lord.'" See what Peter realizes here? Peter realizes that he doesn't know as much as he thought he did. And that's a good life lesson, isn't it? Peter thought he knew those waters. Peter thought he knew there was no way fish was going to be caught on that day. He thought what Jesus was asking him to do was absolutely ridiculous. But now, as he sees the power of Jesus on display, he realizes he doesn't know as much as he thought he did. So, verse nine, "He and all who were with him were astonished at the catch of fish which they had taken; and so also were James and John, the sons of Zebedee, who were partners with Simon. And Jesus said to Simon, 'Do not be afraid; from now on, you will catch men.'" So, they had their soft launch, right? And now, Jesus says, "From now on, here's the big launch. Here's my plan for you, not to do any more of the catch and sell and make a profit, but to join me in my ministry of catch and release, casting the net of the word of God, so that people will be pulled out of the domain of darkness and into the kingdom, or the pond, if you will, of the sun." Says, "That's my plan for you." And Jesus has shown them the difference that he makes when he's in the boat. So, now they've been able to see his power, now he's able to kind of turn to him and help him to understand a little bit more about what he desires for. And so, in verse eleven, it says, "So when they brought their boats to land, they forsook all and followed him." Now, you've read that verse before and it is an amazing verse and a convicting verse, but I want you to really process through it a little bit deeper tonight. They forsook all and followed him, what did they forsake? First of all, that was the greatest catch of fish they ever had. They seemed to leave them right there on the shore. Remember, they were fishermen by trade. So, fish for them wasn't just a good, nice fried catfish dinner with hush puppies and fries, but those were dollars. They left money on the shore. So, when they had forsaken all and followed him, they left a lucrative haul. On top of that, they were fishermen who grew up and lived in a fishing community. They had a fishing business. They had their own boats. So, forsaking all and following him included forsaking their life plan and grow up thinking that one day they were going to be apostles and proclaim the word of God on the day of Pentecost in Acts chapter two. They grew up, thought about making an honest living as fishermen, probably thinking like we men do, that they'd be the best fishermen in the history of the Sea of Galilee. They had imagined what life would be like for them and their families and the business that they would grow and one day leave to their children. But it says, "They forsook all and followed him." They left money on the shore and they left their life plan on the shore. And on top of that, this was what they knew. Everything else they would face from here on out would be brand new. So, their comfort and their sense of security was left on the shore. Jesus took them out on a soft launch. He showed them the difference life with him would make. He invited them to join him in his kind of fishing, catch and release. And they left everything, money, life plan, comfort and security. And we're all in and followed him. Amazing passage of scripture. Now, you have your worksheet with you, hopefully you're able to pick one of those up as you get it in. Got five things that I want us to process through tonight as we think about this particular text. The first point is this. If a little bit of faith is all you have to give, then give what you've got. If a little bit of faith is all you have to give, then give what you've got. Peter doesn't have great faith in Luke chapter five, does he? I mean, Jesus is inviting him to trust him when he invites him to launch out for a catch of fish and he doesn't make the work. In Peter's mind, these are my waters, these are my fish, and I'm telling you, I've been doing this for a long time and all due respect, but you know, maybe you're the creator of the heavens and the earth, but I know more than you about these waters. And so, wasn't great faith that Peter demonstrated, but he did go. So, all he had was a little bit, but he gave what he had. See right under that. God doesn't require a perfect faith. He'll shape what you give. Launching out with God is a beginning point. This is a beginning point in Peter's life and following God's plan for him. It wasn't a perfect faith by any means, in fact, it was a small, shallow faith. But he gave what he had, and over the next several weeks, we're going to see how Jesus would continue to shape him. What you don't see with Peter though, particularly in chapter five and verse eleven, when they forsake all and follow him, you don't see Peter saying to Jesus, "Listen, before I leave this money and before I leave my life plan and before I leave comfort and security, you're going to have to tell me a little bit more." He didn't ask him where they're fixing to go, he didn't ask him all of what they're fixing to do, he didn't ask him how they're going to be able to take care of themselves. He had to ask him, he had to say, "Well, I hear you and it sounds nice, but we need to sit down and we need to kind of chart out a master plan here and then give me an opportunity to make a decision." His faith wasn't perfect, but he gave what he had and God shaped it. Sometimes I think we fail to do what God calls us to do because we just kind of have a sense that we got to have all our stuff together first. And that's a lie. God helps us get our stuff together as we walk with him. But you got to have a beginning point, so give him what you've got today. Point number two. If you launch out on your own, you'll never know what could have been. If you launch out on your own, you'll never know what could have been. And what I mean, launch out on your own, I mean, just live in your life, right? I mean, if you live your life on your own, you'll never know what God could have done through you. The problem is, is we're smart enough and we're talented enough and we're good enough communicators to be able to not just fool other people, but to fool ourselves. Because we can think that we're doing really well and in the eyes of a lot of other people, it can sure look that way. We can be set financially, we can have lots of influence, we can have lots of friends, we have a lot of things going for us and we can think, and everybody around us can think that life is great. But it never will be all God wants it to be if you're just doing it on your own. Remember, it was Paul who said in Ephesians that God does exceedingly abundantly above all that we ask or think in Christ. Right under that, it says, "On your own will only accomplish what we can do." But if Jesus is in the boat, you'll be blown away with the difference he makes. On your own will only accomplish what we can do, but if Jesus is in the boat, you'll be blown away with the difference he makes. Just in life, situations that you've had to deal with, decisions that you've made, I wonder how many times all of us have cast a net into the water only to come up empty. Because instead of trusting in the Lord and instead of following him, we got the results that we were going to get. Number three, this is really important, not that the others aren't, but this is a big one. If you truly encounter Jesus, then you'll see the real you. There's a reference there to Isaiah six, you remember in Isaiah six, Isaiah goes in the, or has a dream and he goes to the temple and he sees the Lord and he sees the train of his robe and his fill in the temple and he sees the seraphim that are flying around and the cries of holy, holy, holy is the Lord God almighty. And as Isaiah sees this vision of God, Isaiah does like Peter did on the boat and he hits the deck. And if you remember, he cries out, "Woe is me, for I am undone; for I am a man of unclean lips, and I live among a people of unclean lips." Isaiah recognized the holiness of God and in doing so, saw the loneliness of himself. Have a point there for you, theologian Jack Miller said that Isaiah fell to his knees because he saw the one he never expected to see. He had no idea he was going to see the Lord, but he did. And when he did, he saw the truth about himself. Several years ago, we were doing a kind of a panel discussion thing in Starkville at First Baptist Church and we brought in Bible professor Albert Pisson from Mississippi State University to come in and be our guest. And he talked a little bit about studying the Bible, fascinating guy, he's from Wales. And so, really fascinating to listen to him talk, brilliant man, a good, godly man. I'm telling you, just it's encouraging at a public university that you've got such a man of God who teaches true biblical theology. And so, his class is, I mean, always packed, it's hard to get into his class. And so, a lot of people were there that night, a lot of college students were there that night. Again, just kind of talking about how to study the Bible and people were allowed to ask questions. And one of the questions was, "Why should I really study the Bible?" And I'll never forget his answer. His answer was, "You need to study the Bible in order to know who you really are." You know, I expected him, I think, to say, "You need to study the Bible in order to know who God is." And of course, that's true and that's implied in that statement. But Albert continued to say, "You will never truly know yourself until you come to know God." So, you need to study the Bible in order to know the truth about yourself. That's what Peter saw. Notice by the way, go back in Luke chapter five and verse eight. And remember, last week, we saw where Jesus said to him, "You are Simon, but I'm going to, I'm going to call you Peter, right? I'm going to make you Peter." If you'll notice in verse eight of chapter five, when Peter hits the deck, that's the first time he's referenced by that double name, Simon Peter. If you look back in verse three, it's Simon. In verse four, it's Simon. In verse five, it's Simon, but in verse eight, now he's beginning to be rock, right? Now, he's Simon Peter. Got a point for you there, point B on number three. Seeing your true self is the first step toward living up to the plan God has for you. Say it again. Seeing your true self is the first step toward living up to the plan God has for you. Jesus has Peter right where he wants him, right? Jesus has Peter right where he wants him, right? This was the purpose of the soft launch, not only for Peter to see the difference that Jesus makes in the boat, but also for Peter to see who he really was. Peter would need to learn before he became that rock in Acts chapter two, leader of the church proclaiming the gospel and thousands of people being saved, Peter needed to learn that he really didn't know everything like he thought he did, and this soft launch helped him in that. Point number four. "If you hear Jesus calling you to launch out with him, forsake everything and follow him." Give you kind of a definition of that in number A. Forsaken everything is a willingness to live by his definition of success instead of your own. Forsaken everything is a willingness to live by his definition of success instead of your own. If I were to ask you, and maybe that's not fair, because I'm your preacher, and so you probably would give me an answer you thought I wanted to hear, but if one of your buddies tomorrow at lunch were to ask you, "What is your definition of success?", what would you say? Maybe you would say, you know, "Being a person of great influence." Maybe you would say, "Being a person who makes a positive impact in the community." Maybe you would say, "A person that makes Jackson a better place." Maybe you would say, "You know, a person who takes care of my family, leaves a better life for my kids and my grandkids." But none of those things are bad. In fact, all of them are good. But have you ever considered what Jesus' definition of success for you actually is? Remember, when Peter, James, and John forsuk all and followed Jesus, they left a big pot of money, they left their life plan, and they left their source of comfort and security because they believed Jesus was better. The end of the day, do you really believe that Jesus is better than what you think success is? Number B. Here's what I want you to know. Wherever you are is the boat from which you are to fish. Wherever you are is the boat from which you are to fish. I want to ease you a little bit here, because as we talk about Peter's life, and as we talk about forsaking everything and follow him, this is not a, everybody is called to full-time vocational ministry, right? I mean, that's, you can breathe easier, okay? But what you need to know is the boat that you're in right now, wherever it is that God has you, whether God has you at a place of business, whether you own your own business, whether it's a hospital, whether it's a school, wherever it is that you are, that's the boat. And the call to launch out with Jesus is the call to go fishing, the catch and release game, with him, where he makes all the difference in the world. And so that's your boat, that's where God caused you to fish. And so we need to change the way we see, the place that we are, and the job that God has given us, and remember, just as Peter, Peter thought he knew more about fishing than Jesus, but he had to learn, he didn't know everything, he needed him. In like manner, so do we, but we're all called to be fishers of men, aren't we? We're all called to cast the net of the word and help people be rescued from sin. And then number five, and this was another message that Peter was learning on this day. "If God is faithful today, you can trust he'll be faithful tomorrow." This is the point. We fast forward in our minds to Acts chapter two. Jesus has ascended. It's the time of Pentecost, believers from all around Jerusalem and the surrounding area gathered here in the city. The Holy Spirit comes down upon the apostles. They begin to preach the gospel in the languages of the people who had gathered there in the city. People are wondering what in the world's going on, wondering if maybe these apostles were actually drunk, how in the world were they able to do what they were doing? Peter, the rock, stands up for the presence of all those people and begins to explain. "Jesus Christ, the one promised from God, is the Messiah sent from God, who you crucified, who is buried, raised again the third day. This Jesus of Nazareth, the Messiah, in his power, you were able to see all of these things today." You see, in Acts chapter two, Peter's fishing in it. He's cast in the net of the word of God, and thousands of people are coming to Christ, just like multiples of fish were brought into the boat. And all of that that's happening in Acts chapter two traces its roots right back here to this moment in Peter's life in Luke chapter five. On a day when he was tired and he was frustrated, and Jesus says, "Trust me, I want to show you something." And he takes him out for a soft launch, and he teaches him that he doesn't know as much as he thinks he does, but that if he'll just trust him in the future, he'll see God do more than he ever could imagine he would be able to see. And Peter said, "Amen." If God was faithful in Luke chapter five, God was going to be faithful in Acts chapter two, and so that is true for you. I love that story by George Mueller, man. I mean, amazing how this troubled boy came to faith in Christ, and all of a sudden, his life was just forever changed. And when his dad had cut him off, he didn't know how he was gonna pay for school, he had no idea that one day he would lead orphanages to care for 10,000 children, no clue. But when he didn't know what else to do, he got on his knees and prayed, and when he prayed, great day, it worked! And somebody knocks on the door and gives him a paid internship that takes care of the school. He had no idea that that moment in his life, God would use to make such incredible difference in the world, as that soft launch, when he saw the faithfulness of God would carry him on with bigger launches to come. Really does go back to what we learned over and over and over and over again last time we were together. As Dallas Woodard said, "At the end of the day, the most important thing in life is not what you do, it's who you become." And God wants us to become rocks. Every time he invites you, say yes. Soft launches lead to big catches. Let's pray. Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight, and thank you for these men who were so faithful to come and study your word, and it's our desire to be men who honor you. We struggle, just like Peter did, we identify with him because we, sometimes we think we know better. Sometimes our biggest struggle is just getting out of our own way, but we thank you for those soft launches that you've brought in our lives and that we've been able to see in Peter's life, where you teach us, and you reveal yourself to us, we see who you are, we see the truth about who we are. We need to be reminded of that. We need you. We cannot do what you've called us to do in our own power. We will never live the life you want us to live if we just launch out on our own, or we want you in the boat. Help us, oh God, to say yes, and may we experience the joy of seeing the difference that you make. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Thanks for coming, we'll see you next week.